I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of September 27, 2017. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, is available at the front of the chambers with the clerk. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. If you parked in the parking garage across the street to the north, please be sure to pick up a parking coupon on your way out for free parking, I think?
I have it here.
Oh, they're up here. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, the commissioners and the staff, cellular phone usage is not permitted in these chambers during any portion of this meeting. We will appreciate your cooperation. Please note that the Planning Commission action is final on Agenda Item 4.3B, Special Permit Number 17031. Any aggrieved person may file or may appeal final action of the Planning Commission to the City Council by filing a notice of appeal with the clerk within 14 days following the action of the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission action on all other items is a recommendation to the City Council or the County Board. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held on September 13, 2017. Is there a motion?
So moved. Beckyus.
Second. Hove.
Please call the roll.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Corr?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
The next item of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request for some or from someone wishing to speak or at the request of a commission member. I will ask Jerry to read all of the consent agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under Section 3 of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Jerry, will you please call the items on the consent agenda?
Yes. Please note that Commissioner Hove has declared a conflict of interest on Agenda Item 1.5, Change of Zone Number 17026. First item on our consent agenda is Item 1.1A, Text Amendment Number 17016, to amend Section 27.63.470D of the Lincoln Municipal Code to allow the City Council to modify minimum parking requirements for the special permit for planned service commercial and repealing Section 27.63.470D of the Lincoln Municipal Code as hitherto existing. Item 1.1B is Special Permit Number 2004A, to reduce the required parking ratio for assembly facilities on Lot 2, Block 20 of the special permit, from one stall per 300 square feet to one stall per 1,000 square feet on property generally located at 56th Street and Alvo Road. Item 1.2, under Annexations, is Annexation Number 17010, for a city-initiated annexation of approximately 211 acres, more or less, on property generally located at North 56th Street and Fletcher Avenue. Item 1.3 is Annexation Number 17012, for a city-initiated annexation of approximately 32 acres, more or less, on property generally located at Southwest 1st Street and West Denton Road. Item 1.4 is Annexation Number 17013, for a city-initiated annexation of approximately four acres, more or less, on property generally located at 84th and Pioneer's Boulevard. Item 1.5 is Change of Zone Number 17026, from H3 Highway Commercial District to I1 Industrial District on property generally located at 235 South Cottington Avenue. And Item 1.6 is Change of Zone Number 17027, from P Public Use District to H3 Highway Commercial District on property generally located at 200 Northwest 84th Street. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on these agenda items?
I had a brief conversation with a representative from NEPCO, an overall kind of description of the, of item number 1.2, and I suggested that that person talk to someone from the planning department.
Thank you. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on any of these consent agenda items? If so, please stand and state that item.
17012, annexation.
Okay. Item 1.3. Any other items of interest?
1.2.
1.2, Annexation Number 17010. Any other items you'd like to have a public hearing on, removed from the consent agenda? Okay, so we'll remove Item 1.2 and Item 1.3 for separate public hearings, and they'll be called under Item 3.
Okay. We can entertain a motion for the remaining items?
Move approval as amended. Beckyus.
Second. Washington?
Okay. Please call the roll.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Corr?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
There are no requests for deferrals, so we will now proceed to public hearings. The staff will make a brief presentation. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. Each person testifying should state their name and address and have, they'll have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The timer will go off after four minutes, then you will have one minute to wrap up your testimony. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Jerry, please call the first public hearing item.
Okay. Under 3.1, Annexation Number 17010, for a city-initiated annexation of approximately 211 acres, more or less, on property generally located at North 56th Street and Fletcher Avenue. Staff recommendation is for approval, and as noted previously, Commissioner Shear did indicate that he had ex parte communications on this item.
Andrew.
Andrew Theroth, planning staff. So we've got a few annexations here today. These were initially identified in the 2017 annexation study, which came out in July of this year. So what I'm going to do is just kind of briefly walk through the background of annexation and the methodology we used for this site. To start out with, this site is roughly near 56th and Fletcher, between 56th and 70th, just south of Salt Creek. So some background on annexation. Annexation typically happens at the request of the property owner. We have a concurrency policy in the city, which means we don't provide urban services unless you're within city limits. So a typical edge development, it starts out as maybe an agriculturally zoned field. As it develops, the property owner wants urban services, they want streets, sewer water, urban zoning, so they request to be annexed. And that's what most of our annexations are. There are a few instances where areas along the city's edge are, in some cases, already developed or otherwise will not be requesting annexation. So in those cases, the city initiates the annexation process. Some of the reasons for city-initiated annexation, the big one is taxpayer equity. When we look at this site, their neighbors are all within city jurisdiction, they're all paying city taxes, and makes sense for this property as well to pay city taxes. These properties are, in some cases, completely surrounded by the city or adjacent, they are benefiting from being within the city. Another reason is clarity of service areas. We'll see on this one, there's some kind of odd jurisdictional things, particularly when we look at county versus urban maintenance, and then city versus rural fire. And then the final piece is just allowing for orderly and efficient growth. As the city grows, it just doesn't make logical sense to have an urban area with little holes of rural jurisdiction scattered throughout it. Our annexation recommendations are based on the comprehensive plan, which reflects the vision of the community. We do have an annexation policy in place. That policy says the city should annex land and priority be that is contiguous to the city and generally urban in character, as well as land that is engulfed by the city. So from that, we developed a methodology for our annexation study with some bullet points. So we looked at four different criteria for annexation. One was we looked at all land in Tier 1, priorities A and B. We looked at all land engulfed by the city limits. We looked at all land contiguous to the city limits and in urban zoning. And finally, we looked at all land that's contiguous to city limits, in agricultural zoning, basic infrastructure is in place or planned, and it's urban in character. We identified eight areas that met multiple criteria. So it was eight areas, 987 acres. We ended up having four public information meetings. We sent out letters to every property owner at the beginning of August, and then we had four meetings at the end of August. So we've tried to be very open and transparent about this process. But kind of zooming in on this particular property, it's 211 acres, it's zoned AG. If you're looking at this, you can see the white area is actually the city limits. So this area is completely surrounded by the city limits. It's in Lincoln Public Schools District already. It's actually two parcels. The west parcel is in the Raymond Fire jurisdiction, east parcel is in Waverly. Of course, the surrounding city areas are all within Lincoln Fire and Rescue, so it's kind of a confusing situation right now. This property does have green belt status, which means they qualify for a reduced valuation. Once they're brought into the city, they would lose that green belt status unless they have a conservation easement on their property. This was originally proposed for annexation in 2008. We ended up withdrawing it to give, NEPCO is the owner of this, to give NEPCO time to obtain a conservation easement. There's still not a conservation easement in place, so we think now's the time to bring this forward again. Do you have any questions for me? Yeah.
So I know there was a briefing on this, and unfortunately I missed that, so you may have addressed this in the briefing, but so in 2008, there was an annexation policy change. Do you, do you know what changed specifically in the policy with regards to the comprehensive plan and, you know, what was the philosophical or overruling principle of that change?
Yeah, well, I can say the piece that we're using did not change, the part where it says we're going to annex all land contiguous to city or engulfed. I'm not sure exactly which piece has changed. There's about 10 paragraphs in the annexation policy that are looking at some, some kind of different things, and some of those changed. The items we're looking at with these city-initiated annexations didn't change at all. I guess we'll see it at the hearings on October 11. The annexation policy has a bunch of guidance about annexing acreage subdivisions and things like that, and I think that's some of what changed in 2008. But again, that's somewhat unrelated to these properties that we're talking about today because these aren't acreage subdivisions.
So there was a policy change, yet the sort of overruling principle was still owner-initiated annexation. So what was the reason for, there was a policy change, but it kind of remained the same? Was there, was the idea to roll it out slowly, or what was the reason for the gap in time between the conversations in 2008 and now?
Oh, well, these are somewhat big undertakings, especially when you have many years in between each area. So, so we had these criteria, we ended up with thousands of acres that we were actually looking at to start out with, and we had to narrow it down. So I'd say there wasn't really any sort of philosophical change where we said, well, we're not going to annex anyone for eight years. It's kind of just something that happened because of the time commitment and then we were doing other things. Moving forward, we're going to try to do this more frequently, every couple of years, every three years, to try to keep up with city growth as the city continues to grow around properties. We had the time to do it this year, so we did the new annexation study.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I do. I'm looking at the agency review report.
Yeah.
On this parcel, and it talks about the distance from city sewer, but I'm wondering, just the policy, but it doesn't say how far away a hookup for city sewer is, so I'd like to know, will the landowner be expected to hook up to city sewer in the near future, and what's the cost to the owner for that? And if you know the cost difference between taxation under green belt status and taxation under city without green belt, you know.
Yeah.
Would you please explain that?
Yeah, so I'll start with the sewer items. If you're within 300 feet of city sewer and sewers available, you'd be required to connect in your annexed. That doesn't apply to this property. They do have sewer around their property. It's within 300 feet of the main building on the property is the 300 feet, and there's just, there's no main buildings on this property, so, so they wouldn't be required to hook in. If they decided they wanted sewer, then they would be responsible for the cost to extend any local mains into their property. Regarding green belt, I don't have a specific number, but I can explain a little bit how green belt works. By green belt, it allows the assessor's office to look specifically at the agriculture value of the land. So you have a field next to the city, it has agricultural value, it also has development potential that could increase its valuation. So with green belt, the assessor's office just looks at the agriculture value of the land. So with green belt, they're assessed, the property owners assess 75% of the agriculture value. If they were to lose green belt, they would be assessed at the full value of the land. But if the property is still being used for agriculture, they're assessed at 75% of the full value of the land. So the difference is really 75% of the ag value versus 75% of the full value. And I can't speculate how much the value of the land would change. Can say a lot of this land is floodway and floodplain, so a lot of it can't be developed, so that would, of course, impact the full value of the land. But again, if they had a conservation easement, they could maintain green belt status.
Drew, do you know if the city of Lincoln or the LPS NRD has contacted this owner about a possible conservation easement?
Not that I'm aware of. Our watershed group is aware of this and aware of the possibility of an easement, but I'm not sure if they've had any discussions.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you. Applicant?
Pardon me? You're right, city's the applicant, so this is testimony, testimony and support is where we need to go now, so.
Or is this the?
Have a seat for a minute. No testimony in support, testimony in opposition. Sorry. I had forgotten that the city's the applicant.
Good afternoon. My name is Bob Caldwell with NEPCO, 6100 Luann Lane, Lincoln, Nebraska. Thank you for having us here today. NEPCO's had a long history of doing developments throughout the city. Our philosophy, motto, et cetera, has always been to collaborate with the city, and we've done wonderful projects throughout. So this is not where we have, you know, animosity or a big challenge with the city. This is where we want to address more the factual basis of what's going on with this particular piece of property, and maybe talk a little bit about the annexation study, the attributes of the property, and then maybe what we think this property is going to be in the future and why it doesn't lend itself to being annexed in the city or being development property in general. In reading the annexation study, it talked about it making sense for these annexations to take place where development was going to occur. And as I looked at the, the map that was being shown on the screen, it showed, you know, just basically a Google Earth map of the parcel, and if we can maybe put up a different one, if that's possible. This one is a little bit more representative of what this property is, which is basically a wetland floodway area, and the reason it hasn't been developed is because the parcel looks like this. So on the north side of the parcel, it's all floodway. On the west side of the parcel is a drainage canal, and we've given the NRD an easement to enlarge that drainage canal that goes to Salt Creek. So arguably, the only thing that possibly could be developed someday on this property is a small postage stamp area over here that's abutted by two creeks, and there's a tiny bit of property over on this side. So this has been affectionately referred to at NEPCO as our duck preserve, because this is not Tier 1 development property as they talk about in the comprehensive plan, or it would have been developed already at this point. This is floodway and floodplain that has been farmed only when it can be farmed, when there's not standing water on the property. In looking at the reasons for the city annexation per the annexation study and exactly what the study said, there were three points. One was equity for the taxpayers because the property was using city services. We don't think any of our ducks, deer, or raccoons are using streets, libraries, trails, parks, or getting snow removal, so we didn't think it met that criteria. The clarity for city services, it's been in these rural districts for tens of years. We don't have a lot of wetlands that have these issues, we don't have any buildings on the property, there's no development, and we don't have city streets or access other than the two arterials on each side of the property. And the third one is it allows for continued growth. We're not impeding growth here where we own many of the surrounding properties and have our businesses, whether it be constructors on the east side of 70th Street or any of our other facilities that are all annexed, all zoned, we all pay property tax on those parcels. This one's just not developed because of the color of the map that you see in front of you today. So while the city annexation or the city master plan may say Tier 1 urban growth, I'd like to find an interesting study that would put that in that category. The next one is, this is one of the things that's not like the others. All of the other properties they talk about in the annexation study had 128 homes, three churches, two businesses. None of these attributes exist on the NEPCO property. This is all floodplain, farm ground, and wetland. The future annexations in the annexation study were all residential neighborhoods that were being annexed on acreages. So we don't see how we are like those. If we had a great need for city services, or we had industrial buildings, or we had people and life safety issues on the property, we could understand some of those things. We are currently studying and trying to figure out what we can do with the property, but we don't think annexation is the right result. In interviewing the folks at NEPCO, I've only been with NEPCO three years, we don't show where we've looked at the conservation easement eight years ago. City's probably right, they have better records than us, but we haven't talked to anybody on our team that says, hey, we should look at an easement, or talk to Nebraska Gamin Parks, or talk to Lincoln Park and Recs Department. I'm sure Lincoln does not want to inherit a green belt wetland park and maintain it, and currently we're maintaining it, and it's a beautiful green space, but it's really not development ground.
Can you?
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
And I guess the last would be, our ask would be, this is much different than the other properties being annexed. It's not Tier 1 development property, it's all wetland and floodplain, and it's easements that we provided to the NRD to prevent flooding in Lincoln, and so we would ask for opposition to annexation, and I'd ask, entertain any questions you have.
Questions?
Yep.
Thomas?
Thank you for being here today. How does NEPCO currently use the land?
Currently, it's just farmed when it's not wet.
Okay. The aerial that I am looking at shows some sort of...
Rock pile.
Rock pile, rock crusher, something of the sort on the property?
The history there was probably for 30 years, there was a, which is basically used concrete pile there. We were notified by the city maybe a year, year and a half ago that, hey, you can't do that on this property, and we're like, didn't know that, it's been there for a long, long time, and so we've moved that operation over to one of our properties, the old Dobson property, south of Cornosker Highway. And so that's no longer there.
Okay.
Did you have your hand up, Chris?
Is there a reason you wouldn't apply for a conservation easement?
Right now, we're researching the tax implications of that. You know, as you think about conservation easements, you think about what entities would want a conservation easement here. You know, maybe in the floodplain area, there is a lot of water on the property, so if you go out to inspect this non Tier 1 urban development property, you'd have to wear your hip boots. Maybe Gamin Parks would look at it for something like that. Maybe we would continue farming part of it. The NRD already has, which doesn't show on the map, an easement that NEPCO granted to the NRD to enlarge the floodplain area of that creek. You know, we would naturally develop this property. I guess if the annexation doesn't go forward, we'll research conservation easement and we'll research a development plan, but absent the city doing something with the floodplain and floodway, you know, there's a reason why this property is empty.
I would like you to explain just a moment the different shades of blue. I see where you have a floodway, but I am looking to see, is the lighter blue 100-year and darker blue 500-year floodplain?
Yes.
Because the whole property is not floodway, because I don't see active rivers and creeks on the entire property. And so I am curious if NEPCO believes they are prohibited from building in a floodplain?
No, as we understand it, there, one, there's no access if you go from 56th Street. There's no, there's no bridge across that drainage way that the NRD has their easement for, and they're, currently, the NRD is going to expand that and make that a large flood project on the east side of the property. So somehow, there'd have to be a bridge built across the floodway, which doesn't exist, to get to the light blue area. The light blue area, well, we'd have to mitigate that and potentially build something out of the floodplain. Because of all the infrastructure around it, you've got active creeks, if you'd look at the Google Maps portion, you could see the active creeks within it, and we know where the water comes up to. Even if you were to put parking in the light blue areas, which is allowed, it's probably not advisable because this, it floods.
Okay.
So commercially, you may or may not do that.
Thomas?
I'm okay right now.
Okay?
Thank you.
Other questions? I didn't see any other hands? Okay, thanks, Bob.
Thank you very much.
I guess this is for questions or rebuttal? Are there any questions? Yes, Maya?
So could you, could you please address the, how the, the points that you list, the reasons that Mr. Caldwell also listed in his testimony for the benefits of annexation, if this in fact won't be developed so that there won't be, city services won't be of the same benefit for this particular? If this in fact won't be developed so that there won't be, city services won't be of the same benefit for this particular?
Yeah, I guess I'd start out by saying, we have a lot of areas in the city today that are floodplain, wetlands, floodway. If we just didn't annex those areas, we'd have holes all over the city. It's common that those areas are annexed as the city grows around them. So yeah, for the, for the reasons for city initiation and annexation, we have equity for taxpayers. That's the big one. When we look at the map, these properties surrounding them are paying city tax. Some of these other properties are also in floodway, floodplain. And then the clarity of service areas is a big one, as was mentioned with the, there's actually three different jurisdictions in this, this small area. So annexation would take care of that.
Do you know of any plans to alleviate the flood issues there, or have you?
I'm not aware of anything.
Other questions? Okay, thanks. We'll entertain a motion.
Move approval, Cor.
Second, Becky is?
Since this project came up in 2008 and was tabled, it, I'm a little disappointed that the recommendation to move on a conservation easement has sort of been left unattended. With that said, I can understand why, if you're not interested in conservation easement, you wouldn't move forward. But for, and it doesn't also appear as if we probably had very many callouts to that area because there's no structures. But for taxpayer equity, it does feel like a good decision to treat them as other landowners have been treated in the area.
Others?
I agree, agree with Andrew wholeheartedly that if we were to simply leave every floodplain and floodway unannexed, that we would have large gaps in our, in our city in terms of what is inside the city limits and what's not. This parcel is completely surrounded by annexed properties. I think that, I think NEBCO maybe just purchased the abutting property along North Seventieth. So I think that there's, there's continued investment in this, in this area that, that they continue to make. And I think it's, it is equitable to taxpayers to, to see this property even though it may have limited use going forward to be a part of the city of Lincoln.
Maya?
I agree with some of what, what's been said. I think in a way, this is similar to, you know, sometimes when we talk about redevelopment agreements and, and things like that. And we, our scope is really limited when, even when there are other issues. You know, sometimes when we do redevelopment, we talk about TIF, and that's a bigger question. But it belongs on, in a, it's not within our purview and it doesn't belong at our table, you know? And I think this is, this annexation policy is an example of that within the strict confines of what we should determine here, which is appropriate land use. And does it conform to the comprehensive plan? It appears that it checks all the boxes. Even though this is grand, this is a, not your typical piece of land. But I do think that it merits a really robust discussion at the council level. How we do this equitably and how everybody's interests are weighed against each other so that the, the greater good wins out, but everybody's treated fairly throughout the process.
Others? Yeah, I agree with that comment. I think, I think that's a great perspective. Jerry, would you please call the roll?
Okay, this is for the approval of annexation number 17010. Becky is?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Okay, next item is item 3.2, annexation number 17012 for a city-initiated annexation of approximately 32 acres more or less on property generally located at southwest First Street and West Denton Road. Staff recommendation is for approval.
Andrew?
Andrew Thoreau, planning staff. I'm going to repeat myself a little bit just so we have it on the record for each, each one. So this annexation was also identified in the 2017 annexation study. Where we're at is, here's West Denton, Homestead Expressway, so, so southwest Lincoln. That's Wilderness Park, just to the east. Some background on annexation. Annexation typically occurs at the property owner's request. We have a concurrency policy. So areas outside the city can't get city services until they're annexed. So as property develops, property owners want city sewer, water, other services, so they'll request to be annexed. Some areas along the city's edge are already developed, or for whatever reason, just will not be requesting to be annexed. So that's the areas we're focusing on with city-initiated annexations. Some reasons for city-initiated annexation, the big one is equity for taxpayers. All of the property's neighbors are paying city taxes. It makes sense for that property itself to be paying city taxes. Clarity of service areas, it can create confusion when there's switching between LFR and then rural, and then back to LFR, things like that. And then also the broad idea of allowing for orderly and efficient growth. We do have a annexation policy in the comprehensive plan. It states that the city should annex land in priority B that is contiguous to the city and generally urban in character, as well as land that is engulfed by the city. So from that, we've identified a few specific criteria when looking at land appropriate for annexation. We'd be looking at all land in tier one priorities A and B, all land engulfed by city limits, all land contiguous to city limits in an urban zoning, and then land contiguous to city limits in agriculture zoning, basic infrastructures in place or planned, and urban in character. So this is one of the eight areas that we identified. You can see it's surrounded by city limit, or it's directly adjacent to city limits on three sides. If we zoom out a little bit, the white area is city limits. You can see it's, it's pretty well engulfed by the city. The only, the only piece that's, that's not in the city here is Wilderness Park, which is Wilderness Park. This is 32 acres. About half of that is right away, though. It's zone AG. It's in the Norris School District right now. It's served by Southwest Rural Fire, when all of these surrounding areas are Lincoln Fire and Rescue. This is another green belt property. So if it were annexed, it would be losing its green belt status unless it got a conservation easement. The surrounding area is part of the Southwest Village Development, which, which was approved in 2006. So this area's been surrounded for roughly 11 years now. Do you have any questions?
Questions?
I, okay.
Go ahead.
I guess I had a question about, a similar question to what I had before. I'm curious how their taxes would change, what the cost to the owner would be. Yeah, let's start there.
Okay. So with green belt, it allows the assessor's office to look at the property for its ag value alone. So today, they're assessed at 75% of ag value. If they lose their green belt status, the property would be assessed at its full value, which could include development potential. This property is, I believe, a tree farm today, which is agriculture. So if it's continued to use, to be used for that, even within the city, it'd be assessed at 75% of full value. So it'd be going 75% of ag value to 75% of full value.
Do you have another question?
I'm curious if they're hooked up, if they're close to city sewer, if they need to do that. And do we have any idea about the development, future development of this property? I noticed they're next to the track, or what, what might be on the horse track. I cast no aspersions on the people who own the track.
Yeah, so if you look at a map, sewer is, is roughly right here. There's actually a, this area is served by a temporary lift station. The, the station's actually located right here next to this property. So sewer's here, and then water's roughly right here in the road. So sewer and water are, are pretty close. In terms of future development, we don't have any approved development plans on this particular parcel.
Good. Chris, you have a question?
Wilderness Park is not annexed. Is there a reason for that, or is that?
I mean, something we're looking at going forward. On the planning side, the big reason is that there are a few properties in the park or adjacent to the park that are outside the city today, and we just can't serve them right now. So if we were to annex the park, we'd be surrounding a few properties that can't get, sewer really is the big thing. But we'd be creating islands of areas in the city that can't get urban services by bringing in Wilderness Park. There, we're discussing future annexation, though, potentially. It's, it's something that could be on the table in the future, but obviously, we're not identifying it right now for annexation.
Other questions? Okay, thanks. Is there testimony in support of this item? Is there testimony in opposition of this item? Please come forward.
My name is Dale Schmidt. We own the property and live at 8401 South First Street, which is just a mile south of the property. First, I would like to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to testify here. I am opposed to the annexation for several reasons. And I will go into those. The first one is taxation and regulations without representation. While we're within the three-mile jurisdiction, we have no voting. We have no control over anything that goes on with city. And, you know, they can tax or regulate us, and we really have no say as to anything there. Since we've owned the property, both the city, the county, and the state have made changes around our property that have not necessarily been beneficial or necessary, only to turn around and five or 10 years later, change. You know, First Street originally went straight through. Now it, it got moved over, and now it got moved over again. And the city, because of the annexation 11 years ago of the properties adjacent to us, is supposedly required to maintain our streets. They do not, on a regular basis, come out and maintain them. They do not plow snow. The city, actually, we forced the city to rebuild one of the streets to give us access to our property because it was torn out when the annexation took place and when the development went in for the Southwest Village. The adjacent properties right now are being used for ag production. And I'm trying to change my thought as far as trying to express to you some of the legalities. I'm, I'm new to this, so I apologize for any of my roughness. The adjacent properties were annexed solely for the purpose of the development of the Lincoln Racecourse. If it hadn't have been for that, we would still be out in a rural, total rural situation. All of the areas are being used for ag crop production. And no development has gone on or is going on in the area. One of the biggest problems that we have that the city would probably get involved with is the wildlife encounters due to the close proximity of Wilderness Park and Salt Creek. We have been forced, over the years that we've owned it, to put up electric fences, trapping, and doing other things as far as trying to keep critters in check in trying to raise trees and shrubs at the recommendation of the Nebraska Gamin Parks Commission. We also, on a regular basis, have to deal with Highway 77 wildlife accident victims. It's quite common that we find multiple deer on our property that, you know, right now, we are just dealing with or leaving the coyotes eat once this is brought into the city. I'm not real sure how that would, what, what we would do. The property is located in the Salt Creek floodplain area. And at this time, development would, for a high-use traffic, would be very difficult, if not impossible. After reviewing the staff report today, I did discover that, yeah, we knew sewer was across the way, but this actual sewer connection would probably be, you know, 300 to 400 yards away from, you know, where we use it. Fire is probably going to be more like 600 or 800 yards away. So realistically, hooking up to a fire hydrant for controlling, you know, potential fire would not be practical. Southwest has come out on several occasions to put out grass fires along Highway 77 and had to go through our property to deal with it. We've had no problem with them. In concluding, I'm not opposed to an act, annexation at some point in the future, but now isn't really the time. The state of Nebraska will, at some time in the near future, need to acquire some of our property for the Highway 77 southbound ramp, which will be the final hookup to the South Beltway. I thank you for your time. If you have any other questions, please feel free to ask me now or anytime in the future.
Thanks. Questions? Thomas?
Thanks for coming and testifying today. Surely appreciate it. Is the current use today a tree farm?
The current use right now is more or less an abandoned tree farm.
Okay.
It is a tree farm. We still have a Nebraska nursery license and operate and grow. Because of flooding that took place several years ago, we have a mess that we're still trying to clean up and deal with. I hope to get it cleaned up in the next year or two and either continue growing trees or convert it back to more agricultural crop production.
Okay, thank you. And then another question for you. How do you, how do you access the site currently? I, I see a Schmidt Place, a Schmidt Drive, a Schmidt Court.
The, the way we currently access it is actually through none, none of that property, but there's a property, a, a road coming in kind of from the west to our shed.
Okay.
That was supposedly, there was supposed to be an easement on that property, allowing us, you know, permanent easement where we could get in at all times.
And that's the Southwest Village?
The easement had never been recorded or written in, so there was no easement. So I had to go back to the city and require them to put back the road, which is now Schmidt Drive.
Okay.
Which you, you have to go down Schmidt Drive and then turn on Schmidt Place to get back to our shed.
Okay. And is that completely paved at this point in time?
No. The, the torn-out portion is not paved. The portion from, on Schmidt Place, from, from Schmidt Drive to Schmidt Place up to the pump station is paved.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Your comment, your comment about representation, what, explain that, or what, what did you mean by that?
Well, as a taxpayer, when you're living inside, or you have property in the three-mile jurisdiction, but you don't have voting rights in the city, I can end up coming in and testifying. But I really don't have any legal way of going about, you know, making changes.
But since we're getting, since you'd be getting annexed, wouldn't that?
I still will not be able to vote in the city. You know, unless we had a residence there, lived there. You know, because you own property, you still have to follow all of, you know, city regulations. You can talk with city council people. And I have, you know, dealt with situations, you know, when the road had been changed multiple times. And during the whole Southwest Village annexation, I had talked with, you know, quite a few city and county people trying to figure out options and what we should do. Right now, the likelihood of, if, if the racecourse ever develops a... Right now, the likelihood of, if the racecourse ever develops a track, the track will be going on the south end of our property. So nothing probably ever will be developed between our property and the creek, which is about a quarter mile south. So it's all going to be agricultural, or, you know, maybe pasture for horses, or... But there, because of the elevation, it probably, you'd have to end up adding substantial soil and mitigating, you know, floodplain, you know, situations, if anything ever, anybody wanted to try and develop or build on our property or to the property to the south of us.
Regarding representation, currently, though, you vote for county commissioners?
County commissioner, county, yes, yes.
Other questions? Okay, I see none. Any other questions for Andrew at this point?
Yes, please. Andrew, could you give me a little bit of background on Southwest Village? And maybe specifically, if you know of any requirements to, if there had been any requirements to pave Schmidt Drive, or what the city would potentially look at going forward? I know the city has gravel roads. But is the intent to leave Schmidt Drive the way it stands today?
I'll defer to someone who was here when Southwest Village went through, maybe if...
Steve Hendrickson with the Planning Department. Was actually going here to try to pull up some of the things before time, and your question was too quick. Yes, there was a fairly complicated history, because as the adjacent property, which was originally set up for Walmart, it was not set up for the racetrack. The recession happened, Walmart didn't come. The property has sat. Later, part of the property sold for the bedding facility to be built to the west. We now have more interest growing out in the area, Southwest Village Heights. The final plat is there, so we're starting to see some residential vaultment. But anyhow, so back when this property, this property owner was not interested in being a part of that coalition of property owners and developing it commercially, and that was fine. But the other property owners were trying to provide access. Because of the whole interchange that was going to be happening there, including the interchange that'll happen with the South Beltway, because today, it's still at an at-grade intersection, and it'll be changing to an interchange. South First Street did have to bend. And so that was done as part of the whole development process of this. That was the developers and the city going together. And so we did end up with this unusual circumstance of, there was this one property, and the road did bend, and there was some of the old road that was left, and there was some new road that was being built. And so, yes, you did end up with this kind of various states of the Schmidt Drive that was there. And partly because we don't really have yet somebody coming in and wanting to do final plat and do smaller lots and starting to develop it, we really haven't been able to address, okay, what's the best way to do there? The driveway for the accessory building, the southern one, I believe that was rebuilt as a part of it, because First Street moved over. The Schmidt Drive, while it is part paved and part unpaved, I don't immediately have the history on that. But again, it had to do with, partly because of how the properties were being split up. But I also don't view that as necessarily a negative impact on the future development potential of this property. Certainly, the fact that it is in a floodplain limits it, but does not make it impossible to develop. But again, all those things really aren't negatives in terms of the ability to annex and serve the property.
And if, Andrew, I don't know if you still have the aerial. So how does one access the, I'm sorry, maybe I missed the point here. How does one access the outbuilding currently on the property?
There's a driveway right there.
Okay, so it's not even on Schmidt Place or Schmidt Drive that they access it currently? Okay, thank you.
Hi.
Sandra.
If either one of you could, tell me, what's the timeframe between now and the Beltway interchange? Or David?
Ready today, I tell you. The Beltway project, so there's two different projects, formally speaking. There's a South Beltway, which will have an interchange with Highway seventy-seven down near the southern alignment of the road, of the main new road. This interchange with Warlick Boulevard and Highway seventy-seven, as well as an interchange at Pioneers, is technically a separate project, but obviously, it is all related as far as everything becoming a freeway for that way to get in and out of the urbanized area. The timing of that is, let me back up. The timing of the South Beltway is that its construction is expected to begin in 2020. Could take upwards of seven years from that point before it's completely finished. It is expected that, within that timeframe, these interchanges will also be underway. And so there is a roughly, within the next 10 years, we can expect all those improvements with seventy-seven and the South Beltway to be completed. They are funded projects either by the state or by the state and the city.
Okay, and would you be willing to forecast, or no, you don't have to forecast this, but what is the impact of, does the city want this property be annexed before the interchanges are done? Is that a necessary step?
I don't think that there's really a direct relationship between the interchange improvement project and the annexation. I think the annexation proposal for this property is more based on what Andrew went through as far as the policies that we have in place to follow for annexation.
All right. So the staff report says this site is completely surrounded by the city. But wouldn't it have to be adjacent to city limits on all sides to be completely surrounded?
Yeah, I mean, if we zoom out and look at it, the city surrounds this site with, obviously, the Wilderness Park gap in between. But, yeah, I think, so it's surrounded and directly adjacent on three sides, but big picture that it's surrounded.
But your definition of surrounded is broader than abutting directly on the site, then?
But as a reminder, it only has to be contiguous per our policy.
Yeah, no.
So it still meets the criteria.
And I get that. I'm just trying to wrap my head around surrounded, engulfed, and, you know, the different terms that are being thrown around here.
The way that statement was being used was yes. In the broad sense, it's surrounded by the city, but it's directly adjacent on three sides.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions? I have a follow-up question to Maya. Looking at this map, I understand the contiguous versus surrounded in the intent and the concept. But let me ask you a question if you would give an opinion. Does it make any sense to tie the annexation of this property to the study and thought that Wilderness Park might someday also be annexed? The way I look at this map is a little different than, I mean, I see what you're saying in terms of contiguous and surrounded, but I also see a property not very far south of this one, and all of the property to the east, that is not annexed. So does it make sense, or would it make sense from a planning standpoint, land use standpoint, to maybe do this when the other pieces that are like this property, similar in juxtaposition to the city, to do it at the time that Salt Creek, the bigger piece, would be done? Does it make any sense at all?
Yeah. So really, we're just looking at adjacent properties. As we move forward with this, there's actually several annexations that aren't completely surrounded. They're adjacent on a couple sides. So from our perspective, this is still completely appropriate for annexation, because it's actually adjacent on three sides. I maybe want to walk back a little bit on Wilderness Park. I'm not suggesting that we're studying it and that it's imminently going to be annexed or anything. It may never be annexed. I don't know.
Okay.
So no, I wouldn't think tying this to anything with Wilderness Park would necessarily be appropriate.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, I believe that we are ready then to entertain a motion.
Move approval, Core.
Second, Hove.
Discussion.
This one poses a challenge for me. This property, though it may be, may have city on a number of sides, is up against not just wilderness, but, you know, half the property is within right-of-way of roads. And this landowner doesn't have much control over the property that they have right now, because it's in road easements. Southwest Fire District seems to be able to come out and manage, you know, what they need to for brushfires or grassfires. And I certainly understand what it means to manage wildlife when you are trying to operate a tree farm. And I would have some concern about city regs on this property owner in managing that wildlife. Not so much, though, deer that get hit by cars and, you know. But, you know, if managing the wildlife who are eating the young trees. This just is, this seems like a hard call if the property, if the roads aren't being serviced, if they're not being maintained, if there's no snow removal. If it's a little confusing for how you access this property, it seems like a better time for annexation might be at some point in the future, but not today.
Other comments? Thomas?
I too struggle with a little bit of the annexation, the potential annexation of this property. In so much so as, not necessarily that the market should bear whether or not something is annexed, but there should be a correlation between, between those two, I think, to a certain degree. And I think that a lot of the area surrounding this particular parcel is not bearing probably the need for annexation. The market's not telling us today that the B-two zoning around this particular parcel is needed or that city annexation was needed, because no one's using that, or few are using that today for its intended purpose. So not that there should be a direct correlation between the two, but the argument, to a certain extent, that because it's mostly surrounded by annexed land, in this particular case, doesn't hold as much weight for me as it does in others.
Other comments?
I'm going to revert back to what I said before. I think we've seen challenges, in my opinion, I've seen challenges with both of these applications that we've seen today. They've not been clear-cut. To me, the kind of the definition of surrounding needs to be discussed. And I look forward to seeing, as I said before, a robust discussion about this by elected officials and the powers that be. Still, I feel personally that I have to look at it from a very limited scope. I think it checks enough boxes to conform to the comprehensive plan, and I don't see an argument compelling enough for me as a planning commissioner to say that this shouldn't be done, given our guiding document. But I do think that there should be robust discussion.
Others? Yeah, this one, to me, is different than the previous item. I believe that Wilderness Park does have, Wilderness Park makes this different for me in terms of how this property is related to the city. We voted on the previous item with a comment that we can't have holes in the city with floodplain and floodway. Yet Wilderness Park is a hole that we have not annexed. I'm glad that planning staff is looking at it, but for me, this is a little bit different. And I don't think that I'm probably going to support this motion. Okay, would you please call the roll, Jerry?
Sure. This is for the approval of annexation number one seven zero one two. Becky, yes?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Washington?
No.
Core?
Yes.
And Shear?
No.
Motion carried, five to two.
Okay, very good.
Continuing on with public hearing.
Correct.
Item four point one is, or annexation number one seven zero one one for a city-initiated annexation of approximately one hundred and sixty-one acres, more or less, on property generally located at South Fortieth Street and Yankee Hill Road. Staff recommendation is for approval. Are there any exporte communications to be disclosed on this item?
Andrew?
Andrew Theroff, Planning Staff. This property is the northeast corner of Fortieth and Yankee Hill, includes the Yankee Hill Golf Course, and then one residential property. To kind of walk back through what we've talked about with these others, this was originally identified in the 2017 annexation study. A little bit of background. Annexation is typically at the property owner's request. When rural land is converted to urban zoning, there's some areas where the property owners are not going to be requested to be annexed, areas that are already developed. So in those cases, the city needs to step in and request the annexation. Some reasons for city-initiated annexation, equity for taxpayers, clarity of service areas, and it allows for orderly and efficient growth. We have an annexation policy in our comprehensive plan. The policy says, the city should annex land in priority B that is contiguous to the city and generally urban in character, as well as land that is engulfed by the city. From that, we've pulled out a few methodology, or a few criteria for looking at when we annex properties. Land in tier one, priorities A and B. Land engulfed by city limits. Land contiguous to city limits in an urban zoning. Land contiguous to city limits in agriculture zoning. Basic infrastructure is in place or planned, and land in urban character. We did have, or we did do quite a bit of public outreach with this. We sent out letters to every property owner at the beginning of August, and we had four informational meetings at the end of August. And of course, there were the letters that were sent out with this hearing. Going into this property, it's one hundred and sixty-one acres. It is adjacent to the city on three sides. And I guess, similar to the discussion we had last time, it is surrounded by the city limits, depending on how you want to look at it. Zooming out a little bit, you see the golf course and residence here. City actually goes a mile to the south of the golf course. So this is, this is very much within the urban area of Lincoln. It's currently zoned A G. It's in the Norris School District. It's kind of a weird situation here, where the clubhouse is actually in city limits for Yankee Hill Golf Course. The actual course itself is outside city limits. So the course itself is technically within the southeast rural fire district. But the clubhouse is in city, so it's in Lincoln Fire and Rescue. So there can be some confusion on if a call comes from the clubhouse and it's someone having a heart attack on the golf course, who's supposed to go to that? So this would resolve that issue. This one is a little different than the others in that it is partially within the rural water district. The golf course maintenance building is actually a rural water customer. They use it in the building. So there would be a payment due to the rural water district at time of annexation. The residence to the northwest is a green belt property, as we've discussed. One other note with the clubhouse, it was annexed in 1998. So since 1998, we've had kind of this odd situation. This area was also proposed for annexation in 2008. Back then, we couldn't work out an agreement with the rural water district on exactly what the payment would be for them losing a customer. We've since worked that out. We have a standard formula. So upon annexation, we will pay the rural water district, I think it's something like nine thousand one hundred dollars for the lost customers in this area. Do you have any questions?
Questions?
Could you, could you tell us the background of the clubhouse being city land?
Steve can correct me if I'm wrong, but my guess is that the clubhouse wanted urban services, so they were annexed into the city. For whatever reason, the- For whatever reason, the golf course wasn't annexed at the same time.
So it was likely an owner-initiated deal at the time?
That's my assumption, is that, yeah, they wanted urban services, so they wanted to be brought into the city.
Um, at the time, if we look to the southwest, this area was, the time the golf course was developed, the area to southwest was not inside the city limits. The sewer was not yet brought up to the site. So that was part of the reason for the golf course is we couldn't annex it at that point because the land to the north was sewer in a completely different direction than most of the variety, most of the golf course. The sewer has now been brought up, uh, right, adjacent to Yankee Hill Road. So the entire property can be served with, uh, city sewer.
And, and that's a good point. Something I forgot to mention is, uh, there is sewer directly to south in Yankee Hill. There's also sewer in, uh, San Mateo on the north side. So per that policy, where if you're within 300 feet of a existing city sewer and sewer is available, you'd be required to connect in, the residential property would be required to connect to city sewer, uh, upon annexation.
And then, um, could we, um, possibly have a comment on the, um, Lincoln Fire and Rescue, um, agency note?
Yeah. Yeah, Pat Borer, come up and discuss that.
Good afternoon. Pat Borer, Lincoln Fire and Rescue, Assistant Chief. What, what question can I answer for you?
Uh, I was just, uh, s- since you're here, if you in mind, um, elaborating a little bit on this being outside of the four-minute, um, response time. What, approximately, what would you be looking at? And what are the future plans for this area as it relates to response times?
Okay, great questions. Um, the closest station to this parcel is 27th and Old Chaney, which is where our fire station number four is located. And our travel time, which is a component of response time, so it's a longer, probably more complex conversation. But when we calculate response time, we calculate approximately two minutes for every mile. That's about 30, 35 miles an hour. Even though we can travel faster than that, generally speaking, when we look at history, generally our travel time is about 30 to 35 miles an hour, two minutes for every mile. And this is, I think, a little over, I think it's about, well, I don't know the distance. I know it's over two miles from station number four. So, um, it, our travel time to this location would be, would be long. But, um, to give you a little bit of history, then bring you up to the, to answer your current question. We are in the process of building four stations around the east and south edges of the city. Based upon the planning department's propo- proposed growth for the city, our next location, four station location is right here. Matter of fact, um, we're looking at, we're looking at the property right around San Mateo and, and Fortieth. So that's our next, that's our next, um, location that we're looking at for a station.
So you brought up the sort of scenario of somebody having a heart attack on the golf course. What, what does happen? Who does respond right now in that?
Um, I can confirm what Andrew's been telling you for most of this afternoon. It is confusing whenever you have, whenever you have a budding districts. Because currently, our CAD system that, where people will call 911, it's not GO-aware, meaning it doesn't operate off of long lat, long lat coordinates. And so it's really based upon cellphone information, or somebody can give you the closest address. And so any, in any, um, any place around the city of Lincoln, it can be very confusing about who should go. And, and dispatchers rely on caller information, and it's, it sometimes is not real accurate. And so I completely agree that whenever you have a property that's completely engulfed, completely surrounded, it should be annexed from a public safety perspective. Because you have roof, roof, uh, fire district personnel traveling through the city to get to a parcel that might be in their district. So, um, in, in this case, right here, we would respond to the clubhouse. And who would actually go, if it were not in the clubhouse, would be really entirely dependent on the caller. If the caller said, "I'm near the clubhouse," or "in the clubhouse," or, uh, they, they could even be near, um, the southwest corner and be close to the city limits and give maybe that address. And even though they were on the golf course, we might go because of where the caller said they were closest to. So I can confirm what Andrew's been saying in that every time you have a budding districts, it's very confusing. Until we get a GO-aware, um, computer aided dispatch system that can actually pinpoint long lat, it's very confusing because we're relying on caller information. So I would be supportive of this annexation.
You?
You're welcome.
Just out of curiosity, when will you, when will the Lincoln Fire and Rescue start calculating response times when the new fire stations actually open? Because I would imagine that response time here would be diminished here in 12, 18 months.
I did the calculation from our nu- our newest close locate, location at 6601 Pine Lake Road.
Mm-hmm.
And I, if I remember correctly, I don't have the calculations in front of me, but it's almost the same distance from 66th and Pine Lake Road to this location from 27th and Old Chaney. I think it's really very close to equal distance.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Andrew, can you tell me a little bit about the properties to the east that are not annexed? Are not within the city limits?
Yep. Um, so to start out with, these are actually in tier one priority C. So per the comprehensive plan, these are properties, uh, we'd be expecting, uh, to be annexed and served with utilities after 2025. These properties, their annexation is somewhat dependent on sewer, but city infrastructure going along Yankee Hill here to the east. Today, uh, we, we can't serve them with sewer. So they're not being proposed for annexation right now. They would be something in the future as, especially as this area to the south continues to develop, moves east, infrastructure goes along Yankee Hill. At that point, these would be appropriate for annexation.
Andrew, can you tell me that house that's, um, inside, or not inside the city limits that is also proposed with this annexation? Is it occupied right now? Do you know?
Yeah, I, I believe the property owner's here today.
Okay.
And then, um, are we looking at the southeast Fire and Rescue? Is the Pine Lake location the closest location that would serve today Yankee Hill Golf Course?
I'm not as familiar with the rural fire stations. The big thing with the, within the room is they're volunteers, so the, the, the people are actually scattered throughout the city. They're, they're somewhere else. They're not at the station, so they have to go to the station and then go to the site.
Right.
So even if our station is further away, we have firefighters at the station ready to go immediately.
No, I was just trying to get an idea as to, because we're talking about a volunteer situation, the differences in response times.
Pat, would you wanna talk about that? Or could you?
And wow, let's get General Pat, so sorry about that.
That's okay. Uh, again, Pat Borer, Lincoln Fire, Assistant Chief. I don't know that I can answer your question.
Sure.
I don't know the boundary lines between southeast rural fire and southwest rural fire. I believe that this is southwest rural fire.
Okay.
But I don't know the boundary line exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, thank you. Is there testimony in support of this item? Is there testimony in opposition of this item? Please come forward.
Steve Spidey, 7800 South Fortieth Street, Lincoln, 68516. Yes, I, oh, I took the map off. I'm the property, seven acres on the northwest part of this parcel. And I can answer some of the questions you've asked here when I get done. Uh, my grandfather moved to this farm 100 years ago this year, 1917. I've lived here and farmed there now for 47 years myself, since 1970. I'm farming this parcel, this property, pretty much the same as my grandfather did. Each year, I'm harvesting about 1,000 pounds of broom grass seed. I'm baling about 500 bales of grass hay, which all, for many years now, is sold to a family out by Waco, Nebraska. I'm growing larger corn, which, all of which goes year-round to Hy-Vee for squirrel corn. And I'm harvesting a little over 3,000 corn stalks, which I supply to 12 stores in Lincoln. It takes a huge amount of labor to do all that, with the labor and the diligent marketing. These crops have been providing over the, over the years enough income to pay my property taxes. However, if this land is annexed, I guess I'm not aware of any crops, any legal crops anyway, that would produce enough income to, to, uh, cover the property taxes, much higher property taxes. Okay, beside my house there, I have a very large historic landmark barn, a machine shed, a corn crib, and, and bins. I have four tractors, a combine, and a full line of farm equipment there. So I beg to differ with the, uh, planning staff that this is urban in character. I don't think there's any way that you would call hay field, grass seed field, corn field, barns, machine sheds, corn cribs, and farm equipment as urban in character. I don't plan to move from this property, and I certainly don't intend to ever put houses around my house as long as I'm alive there. It's important that you know that I have a, uh, easement and a restrictive covenant on the Yankee Hill Golf Course land, that nothing can be built from my property all the way south to Yankee Hill Road, and that that area must be maintained and used exclusively as a golf course. So Yankee Hill Golf Course is gonna be there at least as long as I am. City staff has told me that they're annexing now because they can provide the sewer. And I really have no need for a sewer in a hay field or a corn field. And Yankee Hill doesn't have any need for a sewer on a golf course. So houses are not gonna be built here for a long time, at least in the foreseeable future. And I understand that, um, if and when that does happen in the future, that, you know, you're gonna know about it. And so annexation could happen at that time, which would be a more appropriate time, I feel. The surrounding thing, I've looked, I looked that up in Webster's Dictionary, surround and engulf. We are not surrounded by the city, though, as you saw on the map. The whole east side is 160 acres of unannexed acreages. And I understand if, in the future, that area gets annexed, then I and Yankee Hill Golf Course would automatically get annexed at that time. So to sum this up a little bit, because this property is currently being intensely farmed, it's not urban in character. It's not going to be developed or houses by 2025. It's not surrounded by the city or engulfed. And because of the much higher taxes, which would be problematic for me, I don't feel that annexation is appropriate at, at this time. So I urge you to not approve the annexation of my property or the Yankee Hill Golf Course at this time. Um, a couple things. This is served by southeast, uh, rural fire. The notch here where the clubhouse is, that is actually over the ridge line. They had to get a special permit in order to sewer that, and they are pumping from there. And I don't know, maybe that's more common now, but at that time, that was kind of a big deal for, to let them pump over the ridge line. Uh, as far as the valuation, I think my farm acres right now are at, uh, I'm not positive on the exact amount, but around $3,300 an acre. I've talked to Rob Ogden in the Sessions office twice. If I get annexed, it'll go to 50,000 an acre. So huge increase in valuation plus the difference in, uh, adding the Lincoln levy and the difference between Lincoln and Norris Schools. So do you have any other questions for me?
Questions? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Questions for Andrew?
Do we have anyone else to?
Or staff?
Do we have anyone else?
Oh, other, other, yeah, is there other, uh, testimony in opposition? I'm sorry. Okay. Staff questions?
Yeah. Hi, Andrew. So is the clubhouse currently served by a pump station or lift station, or?
Not that I know of.
Okay. And do, do you know, and, and perhaps this is, and maybe Steve, has that changed over time, or when the clubhouse was built, was it always on city sewer, that gravity flow?
Uh, it's always been on gravity flow.
Okay.
There's basically kind of a, a little ridge there with the houses to the east of it, all along the ridge, as well as the clubhouse. So there, maybe if there's a bathroom in the basement or something, it has a, a little pump in the basement that pumps it out to the street. But the majority of the property, as it was originally set up, it was set up to be served by gravity. There's not a city-owned or a pump station there serving multiple properties.
And then going back to your, your, your comment a little earlier on this, uh, application, Steve. Could you, so clubhouse was able, by gravity flow, to, to be serviced, but you said the remaining southern portion of the ground was not. But on the other hand, there would be not necessarily a reason other than perhaps by, why wouldn't you annex the golf course when doing the clubhouse at the same time? Even though that gravity sewer system would not function there, it was one parcel when it was purchased, I assume.
Uh, generally, what, at the time, what we were looking at is that when you annex property, it assumes that you have city services available or are planned within the next six years. Uh, while it was proposed for to be a golf course, what if the golf course went away in two years?
Sure.
Uh, suddenly then the city might have a request of, well, we'd like to now develop the entire golf course. Um, and you don't have a city sewer there, but yet you've annexed us, so you city, you need to hustle along and, and get it closer.
Got it. Thank you.
Other questions for staff?
Yes, I do. I can see very clearly the reason for safety reasons to annex the golf course. Um, so there's less confusion, responses are clearly, uh, Lincoln Fire and Rescue. But the issue of property tax burden on an individual agricultural business seem quite large and prohibitive. And I'm wondering if, is there any other, is there any relief available? Is there, uh, a life estate on taxes available? I mean, I, I'm not even sure I know how to ask the question. Um, this is an odd...
You're asking for, for the residential, or the residential property that's being farmed? Um, well, green belt is really the program, and then that wouldn't be, it wouldn't be eligible for green belt in the city. So I'm not aware of any other, I mean, it'd be at like the state level. I'm not aware of any other tax abatement programs or anything if you're, if you're farming within the city and not eligible for green belt.
Okay. Questions? No? Okay, thanks.
Can I ask David a question?
Yes.
I didn't realize where. I'd like to know, um, the, the mechanism, the possibility or, um, of, uh, changing this proposal. And I'm not sure that I'm going to, but I would like to know what the mechanism would be.
You certainly have a, the avenue that you would have would be to propose an amendment to this proposal. Um, you, you would move that and see if you have support from your fellow commissioners at that point. That certainly could happen at the city council level as well. Um, so I, I mean, you have that avenue, uh, presented to you. I would suggest that, um, staff would not suggest, would not want to see a, uh, potentially a completely encircled piece of property as a result of any action. So that, that I would suggest that at that, at this point.
And did Yankee Hill attend today?
I, I guess not, but I will say, I guess I do have a, a couple things to add. We, we have talked with Yankee Hill Golf Course, the owner, a few times about this. Last time we had talked to them, they weren't sure whether they were gonna oppose this or not. I mean, they, they didn't show up or send in any written opposition, so we can draw an assumption from that. Going back to the, the tax items, a big thing to point out is that his taxes would go up because he'd be assessed at the value of his land, the same way everyone else in the city is today. There's probably a lot of people in the city who would say, "Well, my taxes are lower if you would annex me, unannex me or take me out of the city." So from our side, we don't really see the, the tax argument as being much of an argument. It's adjacent to the city on three sides, almost surrounded. It meets our criteria for annexation. Yes, the taxes will go up, but the taxes will be, is, are gonna be the same as every other property owner that's in the city today.
Thomas?
Uh, I'm, I'm, and perhaps this is a question for, for the property owner. I'm assuming since, then since we're talking about building restrictions or easements on the country, the, the Yankee Hill Country Club, the, the golf course that you men- on the country, the, the Yankee Hill Country Club, the golf course that you mentioned, I'm assuming that you, I'm assuming that the property owner of the single family residence sold their property to Yankee Hill Country Club and allowed the development of the golf course around them?
Yeah, and that's something to point out is that a lot of this urban development around that property was actually initiated by that property owner. The golf course was originally owned by Mr. Spadell along with, I believe, the, the residential development east, east of his house.
Is that correct? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Other questions? No? Thank you. We'll entertain a motion.
Move approval, Beckius?
Second, Harris.
Okay, discussion?
The public safety issue for the users of the golf course is a primary concern for me here. I think it would be easily anticipated for a user, whether they're a member or a guest, to anticipate that using this golf course and were something to happen, that they would receive service from Lincoln Fire and Rescue. And I would believe that probably if you were out on the golf course and needed attention and were to call, that Lincoln Fire and Rescue may be the responders that would turn up, which is not equitable as, as we know. The single family residence, I think, so, so there, I, I have no question of supporting the annexation of, of Yankee Hill Country Club. That then in turn creates an entire encompassing circle around the single family residence, so I will support this motion as a whole.
Others?
I agree with Tom and everything you just said. And I think if the, the lot with the farm would have been anywhere else, I would have inclined to, to not vote in favor of annexation, but I don't see how we could move to approve the first application we had and state that the reasons were that it's completely surrounded in the true sense and then, and then not do the same here when the inevitable consequence of annexing the golf course would be to have a, an island.
Others? Okay, let's call the roll.
Okay, this is for the approval of annexation number 17011. Beckius?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Sorry. Harris?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Okay, moving on to item 4.3A, or I'm sorry, 4.2, is changes on, I would note that Commissioner Harris has declared a conflict of interest on this item. Change of zone number 17022 from B3 Commercial District to B3 Commercial District with historic landmark overlay on property generally located at 2601 North 48th Street. Staff recommendation is for approval. Are there any exporte communications to be disclosed on this item?
See none.
Ed Zimmer, Planning Department, this is not an annexation. The annexation occurred in 1926. You're considering the landmarking of what was built in 1914, 1915 as the University Place City Hall. University Place had grown to a population of about 2,500, 3,000. By the time they decided they needed a permanent multipurpose city hall that encompassed their police station, their fire station, council chambers, mayor's office, light and water, all of those and auditorium space, all of those in this building. It was designed by a local architect who also practiced in Lincoln, John R. Smith, who built churches all over the region, some houses and the library in University Place. But arguably his masterpiece would be the city hall in his own city of residence. And it today still, well, we're not quite to today, 1923, when Warren Avenue was North 48th Street, very recognizable from the building that still stands on the site today. After annexation in 1926, it was, it remained a Lincoln Fire Station for several decades. And then in 1980s, became an art gallery and art, art education center, was later, I'll call your attention even in this early view to a building beside it that was built in 1957 as a bakery, but now is joined with the building internally. And we're incorporating both in the application because it really makes the most sense not to split up the property. They have renovation plans moving forward. Landmark designation would help them in their process of fundraising. And this request comes to you from the applicants, the Lux Arts Center. And I think I put in a little bit of the interior. We don't concern ourselves greatly with the interior designation where the public use or the public enjoyment is from the outside, but it does happen that as the Lux Arts Center, there is opportunity to be inside this building. Some of the spaces still closely resemble, probably the key interior feature is the oak staircase in the front. And then I bring you Gladys Lux herself, not at 104, which was her, her lifespan, but as the young artist and young art department of Nebraska Wesleyan, for many years she was the art department of Nebraska Wesleyan for about four decades and was instrumental in helping get this started. And after her death, the name of the center changed from University Place to the Lux Arts Center. The package includes the typical set of preservation guidelines. It's recommended to you by the Preservation Commission. And I'll take any questions.
Questions for Ed?
Is this the first application, Ed, for this building?
That was much what the Preservation Commission said of, isn't this always been a landmark? It has been a little L landmark, they're asking it become a big L landmark.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
Before the bakery was next door, what was there before?
An earlier building on the site was an auto garage. This building is 1957. There's a little bit of a curious parcel there, the, the Lux building sits on one lot at the corner. The bakery and the whole parking lot behind in a T-shaped fashion are a second parcel. And at one time a garage had been proposed for that hole, it would have been engulfed by a garage. The garage was only built on the, approximately the bakery footprint. Anything else?
I'm sorry, Ed, what's the difference between little L and big L?
Well, I think there are many landmarks that we navigate by that we find our way around the community. Big L landmark is chapter 2757 of the zoning code. It starts with the Preservation Commission and then comes to you and goes on to city council and requires an ordinance.
Okay.
There's not been an application previously to my knowledge.
There's never been an application.
Not in, not in the last 32 years.
I just assumed it already was.
And, and the Preservation Commission said that. They would always have thought that was a designated landmark. It's not been designated previously.
Thanks. Is there testimony from the applicant?
Hi, my name is Joe Shaw. I live at 2311 Q Street. I'm the Associate Director of the Lux Center for the Arts. I'm here today to represent the staff, the leadership and the Board of Directors of the Lux Center for the Arts. We believe that Mr. Zimmer has presented a full and complete reasoning as to why we should have historic designation and I would urge you to support that. Thank you.
Questions? No? Okay. Is there testimony in support of this item? Is there testimony in opposition to this item? Are there any other questions for Ed?
I do have one. Ed, I noticed when I was reading the, the formal documentation for the landmark application that it says, lists the owner of the property as the city, or of Lancaster County. But when I looked on the website, the assessor's website, it says the Lux Center for the Arts. So I guess I was just a little confused on that part.
Since a previous nomination to you had been Traybert Hall, I made an error and didn't, didn't do it correct and replace there and will do that.
Okay, so the Lux is separate from?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks. Other questions? Okay. Are we ready to entertain a motion?
I'll move.
Second. Beckius?
Discussion? Comments?
I commend the Lux Center for wanting to have a historic landmark designation on their property.
Ditto.
Yep.
I think this is an excellent example of a property and building that we want to preserve as much as we can, so I think this is great.
Yep. Tremendous opportunity to use preservation related benefits for a fantastic community project. Call the roll, please.
Okay, this is for the approval of change of zone number 17022. Beckius?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
And Shear?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Okay, next two items, we have associated items, first one being change of zone number 17024 from AG Agricultural District to AG Agricultural District with landmark designation on property generally located at 6501 Southwest 40th Street. Staff recommendation is for approval. Associated special permit number 17031 to request a landmark designation for a bed and breakfast in their home on property generally located at 6501 Southwest 40th Street. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval and this is final action on this item unless appealed within 14 days to the city council. Are there any exporte communications to be disclosed on this, or these items?
See none. Stacy?
Stacy Hagaman with the Planning Department. Says Ed Zimmer on your agenda, I'm sure.
It didn't fool me, though.
Yes. I'm obviously not Ed, but as the author of the landmark application, I'll give you a presentation on this. So this is for the Burgess Farmstead and then the special permit to allow them a bed and breakfast. And you'll see on the aerial image here, this is Southwest 40th and we're looking west. So this is just on the west side of 40th and north of Denton Road. The farmstead is surrounded by dense windbreak of mature trees. The house faces east towards the road, this is the house here. And then the barn is located south and west of the house and that's the original barn. This is the Burgess family and the bottom middle here are Joseph and Annie Burgess, who are the original owners of the property who immigrated from England. And by 1883, they owned 240 acres of land in the area. And Joseph worked as a successful farmer on the property for about 40 years. And he was well known for his farm management and for his local community involvement. Their youngest son, Joseph, here, he eventually took over the farm. And the surviving 10 children that are pictured here, of those nine remained in the area in Lincoln or, or Denton, Rockabye area. These are photos of the current house's construction. It was built in 1912 after a fire set by a fireworks display destroyed their previous house that they had just built. The 1912 house was built on the same site as that previous house and it stayed in the Burgess family ownerships since. The current residents are John and Terry Thomas and John is a great grandson of Joseph and Annie Burgess. And the farm is still active as a farm. This is the east facade of the house. It's an American four square, which is the most popular house, house type at the time. It specifically reflects the family's prosperity and, and the large size of their family. And that typical four squares had four bedrooms on the second floor and this one is extended and has six bedrooms. It's two and a half stories, it has a gable roof of the typical components, full length front porch. There's also a secondary porch on the south side and a nice feature of a two-story bay window on that south side. So the landmark designation with the special permit to allow it to operate as a bed and breakfast would provide protection of the property. And it was reviewed by Historic Preservation Commission in August and they recommended its approval.
Thanks. Questions? No? Okay. Thank you. Is there testimony from the applicant?
Good afternoon. John Thomas, 6501 Southwest 40th. I am the owner of the property and the great grandson of Joe Burgess, who founded the farm in the 1880s, immigrated from England. And again, very nice presentation of the property and the history of the family. My grandfather was the youngest of 13 children, 11 of them survived to adulthood and nine of them helped populate Lancaster County. So a lot of family history here. Would mention just, my wife and I are preservationists at heart. We hate to see old things be destroyed and run down. In renovating the home, we have taken great care to keep everything from the original house that we possibly could, including the interior as well as the exterior. You may have some questions about the bed and breakfast. It's a quiet area, secluded. We have lots of off-street parking. We don't anticipate lots of guests, so there's plenty of room for parking. I don't anticipate that the operation would really, you know, a neighbor wouldn't really probably notice any difference in how, how the place operates now. So anyway, be glad to take questions.
Questions, Thomas?
Three-bedroom, is that correct for the bed and breakfast operation ultimately?
Currently, we have remodeled to create two-bedroom suites, each of those with a private bath. Under the current fire marshal laws, we don't want to go to the expense of doing what we would have to to operate a third room. We would have a third room available and we understand that there's some consideration to change the bed and breakfast rules for fire protection. Right now it would start as two.
Sure.
And unless those rules changed, it would remain at two. Three would be the most we could operate.
Okay. And under the two-bedroom setup, the amount of guests that you'd be able to serve would be?
Four maximum.
Perfect. Thank you.
Other questions? Maya?
Not really a question, but I'd just like to congratulate you on what looks to be a really beautiful rehabilitation.
Thank you.
And that, you know, you, you, the staff report even refers to your exemplary rehabilitation of the property. I have to look at it and I knew the pictures were going to be beautiful.
Yeah, kudos.
Really appreciate what you've done.
Just for fun, is this picture taken in front of the property? The porch looks very similar.
I'm sure that it probably is, but I'm not absolutely sure. I think that it is.
Oh, yeah.
Any other questions? I, I just have one question. I, I think I remember reading in the staff report that you've reached out to neighbors and you either didn't have any responses or they are, you believe that they're in favor?
We, we've been in the process of doing this remodel and restoration for about seven years now. And we haven't ever hidden from the neighbors what we're doing. We've never had any negative response from them. Some of them are positive, some of them are kind of, you know, neutral. Letters did go out with, with the application and we got one phone call from a neighbor to the south who said, hey, I'm all for you and no other responses.
Okay, great. Okay, anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any testimony in, in support of this item? Don't see any. Is there any testimony in opposition to this item? I don't see any. Staff, please.
I just wanted to say that the photo, yes, was taken in front of the house. It was in 1929 and all of the kids came home and surprised their parents and it was Annie's 70th birthday.
Very cool. Thank you.
Any other comments from applicant, from the applicant? Okay. I think we're ready to entertain a motion.
We'll need to call these separately.
Yes, correct.
Starting with the change of zone 17024.
Still moved.
Second, Core.
Discussion?
I too would just like to offer a...